Okay, Brown versus the Board of Education. It was in 1954. I know that much. It was the case that overturned the precedent of Plessy versus Ferguson, and it led to the integration of public schools in the country. It's pretty amazing, the fact that like, people went through all this work to get us to where we are now. Like, it's mind-numbing, all the work that, you know, that they put into it, and that they really, really cared, to show that separate was not equal.
If you look at, like I would look at, in the state of Georgia, separate but equal was very unequal.
All you have to do is, like, just push, and ask the people around you, who themselves are part of history, because they lived through those past times, to tell some stories.
Finally, somebody has awakened, you know, that separate was equal. Was not even equal. It wasn't fair, and it wasn't equal. And we're still paying the penalty today, because things aren't equal today.
What we needed was a forum where young people could get back inside their bodies, back inside their own experiences, back inside the wisdom of their own poetry, and connect that to the data that we had available.
We're gonna all sort of stand up and circle to get started. Okay, welcome, everybody, to the Art and Social Justice Youth Institute. We are very, very excited to be here.
So we created this Social Justice and the Arts Institute, where we invited thirteen young people from an equally diverse array of schools. And we spent the mornings really saturating them in the history of Brown, in law, in organizing, in politics, and in the research they and we had collected.
I know it was a big civil rights issue, about segregation, how they have white students in one school, and black students in the other.
This is, I guess, sort of the beginning stages of the civil rights movement.
They later found out that black students were not getting the required education as other students of different color. So they went to court. It was a really uphill battle. Even though it's kind of happening now again, schools are getting segregated. Not on purpose, well, I don't know if it's on purpose or not, but you can tell.
I'm fond of saying that I first became a true American citizen on May 17th, 1954, which is the date of the Brown case decision, where that umbrella of separate and equal was removed. The Brown case, which was one of many, many cases, was a very difficult case, because it had to overcome hundreds of years of discrimination.
In my school, even though it integrated, it's still segregated, like I said.
There's school desegregation cases in Brooklyn. There's school desegregation cases in parts of Queens. There's school desegregation issues within Manhattan.
The black kids stay with the black kids, the white kids stay with the white kids, and in the middle, like, they kind of mingle, but not very much.
It's like, it's the whole thing starting all over again. But hopefully, that will change.
And so I say to the student, "That's what you have to do today. You have to, your communities, reach out to all the other oppressed peoples."
I feel that the youth are the future of tomorrow, and the youth's words are gold, and it's the treasure.
We have got to unite together with every group that's oppressed. And we stand that way, we can win!
All right, comment it from any particular perspective you want. Use any of the statistics you saw today that you want. Like, for instance, there was a statistic about suspensions that showed people of color get suspended more than anybody else.
You're gonna start. What if my son is born black and soon? And he's talking, or you're talking to the kid that said, you know, blacks, Latinos are genetically inferior.
I'm good at like analytical papers that they give us in school, like a poem or something like that. I haven't like written in a while, too. So it'll be, I think that's one of the things that'll be a little scary, just like adjusting, like, you know, to everything that we're gonna be learning and stuff.
And in addition to that, you all have your own experiences with school, with the world around you, et cetera, et cetera.
First, write that, right, and then kind of come out of that, and start to look at the things that we have in common, and look at, you know, like how we all kind of obviously care about ending racism, and the importance of success, and the importance of life, and then just go from there. All right?
All right? Cool, really cool. I'm gonna give you about fifteen minutes with that.
If it's a story or something, I'd like to read it out loud, or if it's a diary entry or something, I'd like to read it out loud. I think if it's heard by somebody, maybe even myself or somebody else, I feel closure. You know, someone else knows, or somebody knows.
No, while this is all for the Art and Social Justice Institute, understand too that the reason they bring you in to do artistic things is because all of this applies to the world outside as well. So do not be afraid to draw from examples that have nothing to do with school, or that just have to do with your personal life, or just have to do with how things, how you feel deep, deep down inside about particular kinds of things. You understand what I'm saying?
Like, we use arts to express ourselves, right? So pretty much, when you have social justice, you're just expressing your views about the world, and how society, you think it should and should not be. So everything, always, everything relates back to art, because that's the only way you can really express yourself, through writing, or poetry, and some people drawing, and painting, stuff like that, so.
That's actually exactly what got me on my, you know, thirst for knowledge, 'cause I, you know, social justice through poetry, you know, and, you know, people like Taleb, Qualley, more stuff, you know. It's mixing art with, you know, knowledge.
All right, open the legs. Same thing. One, two, coming up. One, two, and, one, two, and keep the arms going up until you start to go down. Down.
The dancing, I haven't danced since, like, danced since I was thirteen, so that's gonna be, like, it's gonna be a little scary.
Now hit the knee. So we'll go, hit, 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 hit.
I don't have extremely fast muscle memory, so like, learning segments of choreography, just not that graceful.
And then you wanna punch, and punch. Uh-huh. So hold on a second. So instead of it being the same arm as the leg, we'll do the opposite. So the left arm with that right leg. There you go. Five, six, seven, eight, and, right. Uh, yes. Uh, uh, and, uh.
I wanna do poetry. I really hope I don't have to dance, though.
Ready? Six, seven, and, right, left, right, step, step, left, right, left, step, step, right. Yes. Ba, ba, uh, 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 uh. Uh-huh, so once you get it started, you want it to go into muscle memory. So you're not thinking, because if you keep thinking about it, then you get blanked out. Right? But if you lock it to the rhythm, one, two, three. Uh, uh, ba, uh, uh, ba, ba, uh, uh. So front, back, front, step, step, front, back, front.
I really just, my body doesn't move like that.
You will with practice. You will with practice.
It's hard. I've never done it in my life.
Oh, that's all right. There will be many other things that you will have never done before, right? And just a word, can't, I've never done it, will not excuse you from this room. Okay, so I'll entertain it for today, but after that, I don't even wanna hear it. Okay? We're just gonna work. Ba, 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 step, 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 five, six, seven, eight, uh.
The very fact that you're sitting here at an institution of higher education is a whole rethinking of what higher education is, that was caused by Brown.
Growing up, segregation was the umbrella that was over us all.
That folks could be in the same room, be from diverse backgrounds, and one group is not serving the other group dinner or something, was rethinking because of Brown.
We had our own integral communities.
I grew up in an all-black community. As far as I can remember, there was one white store owner in our neighborhood. Other than that, everybody that I came in contact with looked like me.
We had our theaters, our restaurants, our churches, our stores, our businesses, our schools, and in one sense, you didn't really know that you were being different.
I went to an all-black school. All of the teachers were black. The principal was black, and my church was a very large church, right across the street, and the minister and all of the congregation were black.
I had to go past two white schools in order to go to Dumba High School.
So that's basically what segregation looked like to me. It looked like I was a part of one community.
Except that there were certain things where you knew you couldn't go with the white. For example, Washington DC, you could ride the public transportation with whites, but when you got to Virginia, you had to get off and go to the back of the bus of the streetcar.
There was one thing that I did notice, however. A streetcar went right in front of our house, and I would see people passing on the streetcar. I think I really didn't pay a lot of attention to that. We didn't ride the streetcar. It was later when I started hearing about black people having to sit in the back, but I never sat in the back, because I never rode a streetcar. We were not allowed to ride public transportation, because my parents did not allow us to ride public transportation.
You could not go to the theaters, not even to sit upstairs, but you could go to the department stores, and all of them, except one, you could actually try on clothes.
I also was not allowed, however, I realized later, to go into department stores to buy clothing. My mother made all my clothing, and they ordered my shoes. I'm pretty sure, in retrospect, that they felt it was very demeaning. Black people going in department stores had to use separate doors, couldn't try on anything, and were generally treated in a very demeaning fashion. And I assume they just decided not to participate.
My stepmother, who was a Southern black woman, who really, really knew her place so thoroughly, who really was scared to go downtown shopping. We, as kids, went out every place. We went, no, we, I mean, we would go out on Sunday, go to the Village, down to the Paramount, you know, we did everything. She only went to what we call, what I call, "black areas." She went shopping at 125th Street. But once we took her to 125th Street, there was nothing there that she could find. So we had to go down to 34th Street. Macy's. It was just Macy's. Everybody went to Macy's. But she went in, and she started to shake, because it was downtown, my brother. You gotta hear what was going on in a country, not just with laws, but psychologically. My stepmother, who literally shook in front of this woman when she gave her the money, and the woman came back for this thing, and threw the money on the counter. It wouldn't touch her.
It does help to build character and stuff like that, but it also does, like, you know, it kind of makes you wanna shy away from people, like, it's kind of hard, like, there are certain stores that I won't go into, 'cause I'm worried that I won't get help, and little things like that. And it's stuff that you got of with the character building, like, you do grow out of. But I do think that it's a little rough. It's a little hard to, like, you know, to relate to people when you've been treated a particular way. It's kind of hard not to think that all people aren't gonna treat you that way, and that's something that you have to know for yourself, that all people aren't the same.
So that, those rights came in. Stray Scott says that a slave is a slave is a slave. Now let me introduce Plessy. 'Cause I can't just talk to you about Brown without laying the groundwork. Plessy gets on the train. He wants to stay in one car. They usher him to what is then known as a colored car. Plessy decided the car was not the same condition. And so he decided what he was gonna go, gotta find, so he took it all to Supreme Court. This becomes important, because the Supreme Court decided that it's all right to have separate facilities if they're equal. If they're equal. They can be separate facilities if they're equal. And that's when a doctor that would dictate creation of more of these codes throughout the South, or more importantly, would usher in what we call Jim Crow. This is, this is a quick two-minute lesson.
The Brown case decision was the pivotal decision in racial matters in this country. Plessy versus Ferguson in 1896 had said, "Separate and equal is okay", putting the premature, not on separate railroad cars, but on separate schools, separate hospitals, and separate everything. We fought that for years. The white Southerners would not respond to any federal legislation.
We have this time to share the writing that you all have been doing, starting yesterday and into the night, so if anybody just wants to start out.
This is the one I wrote. Yesterday, we had to like look at quotes that people made, and that people wrote, and we had to take things from the quotes or whatever, and like, you know, put them into our poem. And one of them, it was like, at the end of it, "If you treat us like animals, that's how we're gonna act." And I started my poem off. "If you treat us like animals, that's how we're gonna act."
They were ready, ready to do their best, be the best. They were ready to give it their all. But, but...
These labels, IDs, assign exits according to grade, but...
But inferiority stepped in, made them feel a deep pain within.
We still account for eighty-six percent of the level two.
As if to say, "To be used to commit a heinous sin." Inferiority affects.
Well, I think social justice is a very basic concept, and that, other than shelter, and housing, and water, and food, that people have the basic emotional needs. Everyone wants respect and love are pretty much the two big ones. And arts are, in the best sense, very human, so I... It seems like there could be a very strong connection between the two. Most great art comes out of strong emotion, often pain, and a lack of social justice often causes pain, so there seems to be a pretty strong link.
Six, seven, one, two, and then let's make a box, like "I Give Up", on the third beat. Okay? Five, six, seven, we'll go, one, two, "I Give Up." Again, one, two, "I Give Up." And, one, two, "I Give Up." This side you go. Again.
So much of the division between artistic disciplines is largely artificial, and it's really hard to like bring them back together in our heads. So like, in thinking about it, or sit next to them, try to like, almost make, almost do both things in your head at the same time, like, when you're dancing, right, when you're writing, dance. You know what I mean? And because like, you're accomplishing it, so like, go for it at times.
One, two, five, six, seven, and, so it's on the repeat, we'll put the arms behind the back. Uh, this side, one, two, just "I Give Up", boom, ba, and, uh, uh, "I Give Up," busted.
I inherited an inequality that makes my books filled with "motherfucker" and "bitch." Well, if you ever speak of the words close to them, their eyes shudder with ignorance, and reply with a simple, "You people can speak that way. I was brought up better, brought up better, yet I inherited inequality."
I know, like, in my textbooks, oh, there's nothing but cursing in the textbooks, all that cursing, so I thought it was really cool that you brought that up. Like, that's so real, 'cause it happens.
Question, I don't understand. What do you mean, in your textbooks, there's nothing but cursing?
Oh, no, like, in terms of like kids, like, the older books? Like, there's like courtesies, and like, sometimes, like, sometimes you'll see people writing notes.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. There's a scene in Catcher in the Rye, has anyone read that?
Yeah.
And he talks about how, like, you can't find any peaceful places in the world anymore, 'cause every time you think you find a peaceful place, someone writes the word "fuck" like on the wall next to you. And it was just so, like, you just felt like, ah, and like, that, like, on the books. Like, books represented, like, knowledge, and like, why would you want that to be diluted with things that just make you feel like you're not in a peaceful place, like, with your learning?
Like, I know my sister books, she had books that my aunt had, and she's old, and it's like... I don't mean to say it like that, but she's like, older than her, and she's getting the same books, and my aunt would get books that my grandmother would have, and it's like, really bad, and like, we could trace them back. "Oh, did you have this book?" "Yeah, I had the same book. Did this have this in it?" "Yeah, yo, that's my book!" Like, self-esteem, book.
We had a very active parent-teacher association, and so we were constantly giving bake sales, and teas, and whatever, to raise money to buy equipment for the school. We, the PTA bought a globe for the library, because the school had no globe. Bought an encyclopedia for the library, because the school had no encyclopedia. When Glenn got to the white school, there was a globe in every classroom, and an encyclopedia in every classroom, just as one difference.
One of the sort of statistics about connecting is the ways in which, because of different spending patterns, some people get these brand-new shiny books, and other people are using the same books people were using twenty years ago with pages falling out. But it also connects to something about that personal experience, both the anger of people who write those things in these books, frustration, the rage, the hopelessness, and what effect that has then on year after year of students who, when the teacher says, turn to page seventy-nine, you turn to page seventy-nine, and what you see is that. That's a really powerful thing to capture, 'cause it brings together both the structural thing about inequality and the human experience of living.
In fact, I had volunteered at another school, not too far from us, but it was in a poorer black community. And the social studies book they were using was published in 1923, and this was in the 50s.
Because it just seemed like you're looking at your life or your position, and it's already written out for you, and just a feeling of like,
That's great.
There's not that much you can do to change it yourself, 'cause you know what, your whole fate's like already printed out.
Instruct.
Also, in terms of, like, you know, you all got the slips of papers that talked about, you know, inherently unequal, blah, blah, blah. And I like the way that you took and flipped the phrase, and talked about inheriting inequality, and that's...
That's really nice.
And again, yeah, that really, really works in terms of the piece.
You are inherently unequal. That's what you tell me by giving me books that are ten years older than Miss Charlie's Angels over there. Yeah, you, señor suit con su striped corbata and your bandera americana. I inherit inequality because you put me in the back of Miss Kramer's class when we had supervisors scanning the room, overlooking black bodies with books that have starched colors. You're overwhelmed with pretty blue-eyed faces, and shining books and initials embedded into their hard cover.
The junior high school I went to, there were no labs. We did labs with books, you know, you did a lab with a book, so you wrote it all out, but you didn't go in there and figure it out. You know what I'm saying? You did not go and do it. So when I get to high school, we go to a real lab, and with test tubes, whatever, and the teacher came in and said, "Well, we're gonna do a lab, an experiment, you probably did in junior high school already, just to refresh your memory." And I stood there paralyzed, because I had never dealt with a Bunsen burner, I had never dealt with a test tube, I had dealt with it in the make-believe world of... And you know, there are still schools that teach science, but no labs.
It's really just like, this is my experience, and like, I'm not trying to make it cute, and I think that that's the best poetry, you know, in certain ways, because it's like Roger said, it's just honest, you know, and the poetry can be crafted out of that.
Subway terrorist map, don't go further than 125th Street equals, "I'm not here." A B squared equals A A B B. Um, "Excuse me, Caitlin, can I borrow your book, please? I think someone stole mine." "I would." "I'm sorry, but I can't." Equals, "I would, but my father told me not to get Puerto Rican fingerprints on it. He doesn't want me involved in a crime." "Brought up better, yet I inherited inequality." 440 plus X equals what? A B squared equals who? Nothing. This is, in fact, my poker face, "Mr. Suit con su striped corbata and your bandera americana." Take that red, white, blue off, and look at me.
So I really commend you for putting so much emotion into it.
I like that.
So I want you to put movement to your spoken word, like you did the last time. All right? You'll have about fifteen minutes.
You keep going with the arms. Uh, 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 uh.
Inferiority affected my mind, had me blind to my history's accomplishments.
Uh-huh, and Travis, throw it from the back. Uh, ba.
Shanghai, Mali, Ghana, Kim and Indis Kush, these places, they didn't exist. They didn't tell me about the great Hajj of Mansumso. They never helped me understand what an Ankh was, and who a Sauron or Setar. I didn't know about Malcolm, and Yui, Bobby, Denmark, Nan, Tucson, Gabriel. I never learned to W eat the boys, never, never, never.
When Amir's climbing, there's both this, this kind of two-edged thing going on about being pushed down, being oppressed, but then climbing up, and finding history in that, right? 'Cause you stay down in that part, you're still down there. So it's both the place that feels kind of heavy, and at the same time, it's where you begin to find your history. Okay? So all of that, all of that is in that one very simple gesture.
If you've ever been to a poetry reading, when you listen to people's poems, and they're speaking to you, and it's about something that you've experienced, it gets you, you feel it all through your body, you get cold, you know, you get stiff, you're like, just listening, you know? It's crazy, you know, it really messes with you. There's definitely a connection, you know? Poetry has the power to move people. Books, words, language has the power to move people. You can definitely move people, you know?
It was the, your son, if he were born soon, black, prompt. That wouldn't apply to you, would it? Because of that plaque hanging in your home office, you know, the one you had added a year ago, just so you can spend more time at home?
Because of that plaque hanging in your home office? The one you remodeled the basement den for? So you can spend more time at home?
No, that would have no justification in the categorization of your offspring, because his genetic makeup would be just fine.
That would have no justification in the categorization of your offspring. His genetic makeup would be just fine, at least from what you contributed to the baby-making process.
Whose genetics exactly are inferior?
Whose genetics exactly are inferior? Whose genetics exactly are missing a few crossbars on the double helix?
Whose genetics are you examining?
Whose genetics exactly are you examining through your microscope?
When you do your first jiggle, you're gonna touch the floor. Right, so you go, left, right, right, left, uh-huh. Try to touch the earth. Okay, so go, one, two, up, one, two.
Mademoiselle Mercedes with the child's seat in the back, Oscar de la Renta's skins, chromosomes. You are making a difference. You are making a difference. Only, it isn't even your microscope. It was passed on to you from your ancestral scientists. And now, it's your turn to look at everyone through the antiquated lens. And now, it's your turn to look at everyone through the antiquated lens, but you don't turn it on yourself because you didn't inherit inferior DNA.
I like the double helix, that was hot, like, putting science into, like, poetry and expressing your art through that way. I thought that was really nice, I liked that a whole lot.
And then I was just curious, what was the plaque thing that you referred to earlier?
You know, college degree or like, something that signifies of like, you know, status, yeah?
Because I was thinking like it was a doctor's office, and his name was on the plaque, and like, I'm walking through the door and I see him looking at me, like, his big microschool. So I was sitting there like, oh, snap! That's why I like, that's why I like the double helix, because then you go inside of me trying to find out if my helix is wrong, but it was the mindset was incorrect, it was yours.
And that's good that you get that, even if it was not necessarily the thing, the specific thing that she intended, you know what I mean? Because it gives you a whole different way, you know, to look at it.
Who's up?
Oh, um, go blue is like, it's something I mentioned here, it's like my school slogan, like, for sports, like, our color is blue, so they go, go blue.
Go blue roars a bumper sticker on the back of her SUV, a cell phone covered by blonde hair, she pulls out of her Starbucks parking space without looking in the rearview mirror. Horns retaliate, I sigh. This is my hometown. Go blue, their SUVs roar as they drive past the ghetto part of town. They believe they don't see the bullet holes in doors, the boarded-up windows, the train tracks where housing should be. Drive by the houses with seven bedrooms, through the floor-to-ceiling windows you can see the indoor swimming pools, hear the swish of tennis rackets, and pretend that it all looks like this.
When I'm out on the street in South Orange, you know, if I'm not on the other side of the town, you know, I get different, you know, vibes from people than I do if I'm on my side, you know? Because I would say Scotland Road is like the race line, like, where it separates, you know?
And in the classroom, the imbalance is subtle undercurrents in hallways, AP classes on the top floor, special ed in the basement, and although over half the faces in the yearbook are darker than mine, on the third floor, everyone looks like me.
Though dark faces paint 55% in the hallway, segregation still reigns in the cafeteria in AP classes and detention. Just don't let the state, the state know, but stay hush, hush, and ride the pseudo-underground railroad, this free ticket to funding from the Board of Ed.
Flashback to 9/11 vigil, my friend wrote a poem about freedom. It rhymes and has flow. Principal won't let him near the podium because it's like a rap. And after all, white people hate anything with rhythm, and only white people attend 9/11 vigils.
We will make our own history, write our own books, we will burn these halls until we get our answers, because we'll huff and we'll puff and we'll blow their shit down.
Like, I like the, I'm looking at the, I like the reality that you put in there about, like, the 55%, you know, dark faces and everything, when in the cafeteria, it's very well segregated. Like, in my school, it's 51% black, 46% white, and like, whatever in the middle. When you go into the cafeteria, it's like, we have two cafeterias, you know, and most of the white kids go out for lunch, and then the rest of them stay in the new cafeteria, and the other ones stay in the black cafeteria, you know what I mean? And the old cafeteria, and it's like, you know, it's mixed a little between the two, but not really, and, you know, that got to me really, you know?
Once you get black students into a place, that's not the end of the game.
So I'm saying, this educational thing is important, but not necessarily just putting bodies next to each other, you know, in a very uneven fashion, but, you know, but when you put people, bodies, next to each other, then you gotta have people who understand what that means, you know? What is the psychology of that?
Integration was not a moment, it was not an event in which closure has been achieved, it was not, it's not some sort of finite thing that can be held up and looked at and appraised as you would a jewel.
At some point in those classes, I was being, I was lessening, I was becoming smaller and smaller. I no longer could see myself at all. I mean, I didn't have a sense of me at all. I had a better sense of me in the Southern school, where it was all, quote, segregated, if you're ready for this, than I had in a place called New York City, where we could go on buses, riding buses, go downtown to the Village, you know, go all over the city, whatever, but there was never a sense of me.
It was really easy to picture, like, everything that you were saying, it was very, it was very powerful and, like, moving. And I went to a junior high school where it was just like that, there was the white kids and the black kids, and that was it, like, there was no in-between, we didn't have that little percent in there, so, like, it was very segregated, like, we had the track system, and that's what it was like every single day, the white kids and the black kids had different buses, it was really, because they, the different neighborhoods, so...
For everyone to have an understanding of each other, I think that's when you get the true integration, you know what I mean?
Integration is a process, and integration, in some ways, is an ongoing changing condition that people constantly have to think about what their relationship is to.
I mean, you can understand someone, but unless you actually, you know where they're coming from, you can never get as close, you know?
You have to figure out ways, again, to get people to actually see one another for who they are. So the black students are, all aren't one monolith, there are lots of different people coming from different areas, they got lots of different things that they want to try to do.
Since sixth grade, people had all been saying I was a white girl, and I never understood it. I was like, how? I didn't understand it because I figured that being white or black was just the color of your skin, and then I find out that it has to do with the way you talk and the way you dress and stuff.
The kind of integration that people believed in when they were struggling to achieve integration has not yet been achieved.
They saw me as an Oreo or a white girl, it was really weird to me, actually broke my heart, too, because I figured, well, that's kind of sad, and if they didn't say it like, oh, you're white, that's cool, they said like, you're white, ew, that's bad. So I was like, well, first of all, I don't understand how you could be white or black, unless you have the skin color, I guess that was naive of me, I don't know. And first of all, I was like, well, what's wrong with that? I mean, we're all equal, right? I guess not.
And so I just stopped going to classes, period, and I went in and there was this nice little woman, sitting there, counselor, she looks like somebody's grandmother, and she said, well, what do you want? I mean, Sonia, oh, what can we do? And I was got ready to open up to tell her what was going on, I don't see me here, there's nothing that's, you know, involved, I mean, where am I? You know, who am I in this place called Hunter College? And before I could get it out, she said, because, she said, we brought you people here because... And I looked at her, and I shut down.
I think that's one of the problems with, you know, some of the problems with the kids is coming up, you know? There's not too many black teachers in high school, I think we actually need more of them, especially if the school is 51% black now. There has to be that connection, you know? There definitely has to be that connection, the only places that there are is like ISS, in-school suspension, the dean's office, those are people they're going to be connecting with, I mean...
I found it, she, oh, I can tell, I wanted to be a writer, I wanted to be a writer, all, I said, well, I'm studying this pile of political sciences, I want to be a lawyer, right? I said, but I really, deep down in my heart, she said, there are no Negro writers, Sonia. Now, I knew from the South that there were Negro writers, I mean, I hadn't encountered any at Hunter, but I knew there were Negro writers. She said, oh, and she laughed, a laugh that pierced my soul.
It's not so much about whether or not integration is a good or bad idea, but it's more, at what point do we believe in integration as something that has to do with being seen for who we are and who we can be, as opposed to being seen for what someone else believes that we ought to be.
Get some space, you want to be with Natasha, because what I want you to do now is just move.
We don't say them out loud.
Do you think? Don't say it, just use movement, okay? Five, six, seven, eight.
I was thinking about how expensive it is for one group of people, white or black, rich or poor, to hold another group of people back. Because you can't dance if you got one foot on somebody else's neck. The only way you can dance is with both feet, and this society has got to dance, and I hope this society dances. We have to recognize that every man is my brother, black, white, green or yellow, and when we have reached that point, I think we can dance, and I think we're gonna, they're striking up the band.
Wow.
I think there are some cool lines in here that could kind of go into it, but... So what you do is you put a little star next to those, after you get the form pretty much totally made, you'd be like, where can I slide this in? You know what I mean? Once you get the frame, and you can like, put anything in there, it's like, once you have a dresser, you can put any clothes in the drawers, but you need the dresser to know where to put your clothes in.
At the beginning, could you say something about your own doxologies? All right, there is a hymn called the doxology, that, at that point, that you could probably, since you can sing, like, overly over it, it goes...
All right, so I'll check back in with you guys in like 10 minutes.
What I'm gonna be saying while you're singing?
Okay, so stop from very tough.
Yeah, why not?
Okay, um, it, it doesn't feel good to be silent, as a matter of fact, it's just plain uncomfortable. Kind of like when the bully decides that he wants to get violent.
Kind of like when the bully decides that he wants to get violent, so he puts you in a headlock so tight that he crushes your larynx.
Or voice box.
Or boxed voice.
My windpipe is pulled like a cylinder of chewing gum by dry, ashy fingers well into my pelvis.
And I hate to tell this, but even after he releases, my neck is in pieces.
And now, this line that I wrote last night, I don't know where that, like, is that, are we gonna be saying that in discordance, or are we gonna be saying that together?
Can you read it again?
It's, um, it doesn't feel good to be silent.
It doesn't feel good to be silent.
This kingdom suffereth violence and the violent take it by force.
And this kingdom suffereth violence and the violent take it by force.
God has written my faith, oh, silencer, you cannot change my course.
God has written my fate, oh, silencer, you cannot change my course.
But remember and understand that silence is a choice. Praise God from whom all blessings flow.
I was given two ears and one tongue. Can't I listen more than I speak? Where is the harm in that? The Lent in silent means I'm giving that space back.
And I think if you come back towards the end, then it creates an excellent frame.
Oh, no, you know, we should do, we should do the second two lines, praise him above all creatures, when we talk about, like, how people don't speak up when racism in public.
Oh, okay.
Forty-two percent of white American teenagers speak up when they hear racist comments.
Bold, decisive, be fierce, be confident, be honest.
But what kind of schools do we have where 58% of white teenagers don't speak out against hatred?
Being quiet is a strong choice.
Except when it isn't.
Except when it isn't.
Except when it isn't. Except when it isn't.
I'm gonna stay on the battlefield, I'm gonna stay on the battlefield, I'm gonna stay on the battlefield till I die.
As far as we've gone, we've got a long, long way to go.
Hmm, what crowd of people do I want to talk to? Truthfully, I want to call you all out.
Why are so many pages missing from my books?
I want to call each and every one of you out who have a cheer in the meetings that are supposed to make a difference in our schools and our society.
Why am I the only black, Latino, or Asian girl in my AP class?
Art is a way that people can express the way that they feel about a situation, like, you know, some people draw, like, you know, some people sing, some people yell, like, you know, and I think just in this particular case, people are screaming and singing and yelling for justice.
I'm gonna stay on the battlefield, I'm gonna stay on the battlefield, I'm gonna stay on the battlefield till I die.
The only way you deal with power like that is to keep pushing.
I want to call all of you who may call to actions and never actions we can call on.
Why are insults and disses carved into my desks? And why am I beginning to do it, too?
I want to tell all the secrets of how you make all the decisions by what you believe, by what you value, never once taking you out of the equation.
Why are all my classrooms so crowded?
Segregation of white and colored children in public schools has a detrimental effect upon the colored children.
It is time to move us all into another century, time for freedom and racial and sexual justice, time for women and children and men, time for hands unbound.
Self-segregation in my public high school, different colored threads, separate rolled spools, is this a topic on which I can speak? Because my skin isn't brown. V board.
How at all the wrong reasons you're acting all stout, holding the truth what needs to be shared, what my educational system is really about.
The impact is greater when it has the sanction of the law.
Diversity is our beauty and integration is our blood, as it flows down the roads that we walk on screaming, "The people united shall never be defeated with a reason centuries old."
Come, I say come, I return to the fight, this fight for the earth, this fight for our children, this fight for our life.
Power conceives nothing without pressure. Pressure, agitate, agitate, agitate.
The children of today cannot love our tomorrow if the rulers of today do not.
For the policy of separating races is usually interpreted as denoting the inferiority of the Negro group.
There was one black girl in my AP American class. One day, we read a poem comparing Booker T. to W E B., and we all sat staring at Alana, waiting for her response. Then we realized we were staring at her and started to turn away, really casual, like nothing had happened, but it had.
A sense of inferiority affects the motivation of a child to learn.
Soon after being in my six-person class, like, yesterday, I remember, South Orange Maplewood School District classified me. It was December 2000, she said, I was eligible for special ed.
We need your hurricane voices, we need your sacred hands, I say, come, sister, brother, to the battlefield.
No, you shut up. You, the miseducator and misinformer, you, the history rewriter that tries to contain my generation to one-sided tongues.
The past is not a church that you go into and just, you know, kind of fall silent and bow your head.
We conclude that in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place.
Possessing this label they gave me, I swallowed the stigma and felt the pain of being seen in a room with six people, yeah. It fell upon me, and the pain was like stones that rained down on me from the days where school assemblies seemed segregated and I had to watch my girl crystal from balconies away from the normal kids.
Come into the rainforest, come into the hood, come into the burio, come into the schools, come into the abortion clinics, come into the prisons, come and caress our spines, I say come.
Also to take into account, white kids unfairly assessed in... white kids unfairly assessed in eighth grade can never take AP Calculus, AP Bio, AP Chemistry. Need I go on? Tracking isn't bad for minorities. Tracking is bad. Tracking is bad.
"The doctrine of separate but equal has no place."
But what slipped your mind, what you forgot to mention, was a captain, a king, like Bayard Rustin. Afraid that being gay would retard progression, he held his lifestyle in quiet suppression to maintain the credit of a marching Washington.
The past is something that you have a dialogue with. The past is something that you engage in a conversation with. And really, as you grow older and more able, the past is something that you shape.
In the commons of my Westchester Public High School sits a girl I used to be friends with. Miraculously, between junior high and now, she's developed a South Bronx accent. It's no accident. Does she remember that time we dressed up as flappers? I'm not about to ask her. Not after a freshman year of unreturned smiles. My skin isn't brown versus bored.
And the pain was deep. The pain, oh God, the pain, the ridicule, the constant taunting, the laughing when they passed me by told me that community college should be my goal.
"The doctrine of separate but equal has no place."
It wasn't until Ms. Cooper came and rescued me with her history class. Showed me the importance of my history and told me the secrets my ancestors held. She told me about the Malcoms and the Huey Newtons. She told me to speak out because this is the story of many and none of them are speaking.
Every moment of the day, we should be working, each one, reaching one, teaching one. Teach about our beauty, our history and our battle. We must rise to our true selves. We have work to do. I encourage you to not die with your work boiled up in your fist.
"Wrap your feet around justice. I say, come, wrap your tongues around truth. I say, come, wrap your hands with deeds and prayer."
"Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal."
And so the hope comes from, the experience is the past and that the same thing can happen today.